Andyan sa mabangay, wala pa sa kasi na kami na palong.
Okay, andan na kasi mong tagalog?
Counting.
Okay na? Okay. Magti nagalug ka na? Magti nagalug na. Okay na? Okay na? Naku, ang saon ba ni Ron? Magandang hapon sa lahat, tayo ay tatayo. At sisimulan na natin ang pinakat... 38ong... 38ong sesyon sa ikabente na konseho ng lungsod ng Kageyandu Oro. Ang magdasal ngayon... Kung ginukun, saan namang tagalog ni? Ang kagalanggalang na konselor, Maria Lordes Gaany, ang susunod ang pag-awit ng Lupang Hinirang and ang Kageyandu Oro March. Palihong tayo.
Magandang hapon. Magandang hapon. Thank you. Let us put ourselves in the presence of God. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty and loving God, we gather before you today as members of the Kageyandu Oro City Council, entrusted with the responsibility of making decisions for the betterment of our beloved city and its people. We humbly come before you seeking your wisdom, guidance, and blessings as we undertake the important work ahead of us. Grant us the discernment to make fair and just decisions, considering the needs and aspirations of all Kageyanduns. Help us approach each issue with open minds, seeking common ground, and striving for unity. May our discussions be marked by respect, understanding, and constructive dialogue, always keeping in mind the well-being of those we serve. Lord, we acknowledge the challenges that our city faces, be it in the areas of governance, public services, or the welfare of our constituents. We ask for your strength and fortitude to tackle these challenges with determination and perseverance. Help us to be good stewards of the resources entrusted to us, using them wisely for the benefit of all. As we begin this council session, we invite your holy presence among us. May your spirit guide our thoughts, words, and actions, inspiring us to make decisions that promote justice, equality, and the common good. Let your grace and love shine through us as we serve our fellow citizens. In your holy name we pray, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Sorry, English.
Mga kababayan, ang pampansang awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang magiliw, teras na si Rana. Palaw ng puso sa diti po'y kuwai. Lupang Hinirang, huwag ka nang mahiting. Sa manlurupi, ikapasisidil. Sagadadap, tutok sa si Boyan, isalali ponggaw. Ay hilagam tulakaw, it'sa po kayang pinamahal. Ang isda't napakawak, uy na'tu, ay naratingin. Ang ituwi na'tarot, na'tayna, mamay na'tatingin. Lupang apalaw, na'warat, ipaksikta, huwag ka mit sa pilito. Ang inigaya na'tarot, ay wag namin, ang palakay na'tayusyo. At 'nang di'rawo, awrak, ang beloved city. Tayang angis, pibas, beses, tayang ipot, andenzed, happy. At mayang, di'rawo, awrak, ang beloved city. Dear sinig, beses, in'awp, or, ever, to his, dear. God made way to the land of promise. Pray, may a walk on far descent, is'ngay, shaw, or, the cross. To serve you forever free. The prophet, will, page, of life, love, and, passion. Act in the use of the host, the law. Every place, more, than, but, my heart. And you, for the grace of God, of the love, and, city. Loving me, my, beloved, who, my, my, to father. And you, for the grace of God, of the love, and, city. Si'ngay, ang, and, to, the, Lord, and, the, Lord.
Salamat. Pwede na kayong umupo? Mister Secretary, maaari ko po bang gilingin sa ating kalihim ng lungsod na ipatawag ang mga membro upang masiguro ang pakakaroon ng korum sa ating sesyon ngayong araw na ito? Maaari na po ba kayong magpatuloy ginoong kalihim? Ay, magpangatawag, edya praktisko.
Kagalanggalang na Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, DC Alcalde ng lungsod at Namumunong Oficial ng Sanguniang Pang lungsod. Para sa unang distrito, kagalanggalang na Agapito Roberto G. Swan, kagalanggalang na Roger G. Abaday, kagalanggalang J.R. Pasqual, kagalanggalang Amy Rose P. Moreno, kagalanggalang Romeo V. Calizo, kagalanggalang George S. Go king, kagalanggalang Jose P. P.S. Abu Junior, at kagalanggalang Malvern I. Esparsya. Para sa ikalawang distrito, kagalanggalang Ivona Yasini B. Imano, kagalanggalang Maria Lordes Isgaany, kagalanggalang Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, kagalanggalang James K. Judith II, kagalanggalang Ian Mark Yonakaya, kagalanggalang Edgar S. Cabanlas, kagalanggalang Christian Rustico M. Atchas, kagalanggalang Suseth G. Magtahas Daba. Para sa mga ex-officio members, kagalanggalang Yan Lam Es Lim, Presidente ng mga Ligan ng Barangay, at kagalanggalang Michael Elseno, Presidente ng Sanguniang Kabataang Federation.
Recording in progress.
Diriskoro, madam Presiding Officer.
Nakumpirmanan ng ating kalihim ng lungsod ang pakakaroon ng korum para tayo ay makapagpatuloy sa ating sesyon ngayong araw. At tayo na po ay magpatuloy sa susunod na ehenda. Ah, majority... Kagalanggalang Majority Floor Leader, pwede ba tayo... May nag-bird... Hindi, wala pa dito si ano, kagalanggalang J. Pasqual? Wala pa. Happy Mother's Day sa lahat ng mga mama na nandito ngayon sa sesyon. Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor B. But Rodriguez. Good afternoon to the members of the City Council, to the visitors we have, members of the media, and those watching us in social media. Madam Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session on May 8, 2023, and considering the furnishing of the copies of the minutes as reading itself.
Second. Sigundo.
Sigundo.
Sinong tututol? Huh? Walang tututol, masyon inaprubahan. Ay, magpangatawag.
Move to... Ano 'yun?
Approbar?
Move to approve or... Aprobahan ang minutos. O sa nakaraang regular sesyon sa ating Sanguniang Pang lungsod.
Oh, approbahan may sigundo. Pangalawa. May tututol. Walang tututol, masyon approved. Tagalog ba na approved?
Ah, okay. Madam Chair, bago tayo magpunta sa regular agenda natin, gusto ko lang ipalam sa ating magandang Vice Mayor.
Salamat.
Na mayroon tayo mga bisita dito ngayon, mga membro ng City Oro Youth Development Council. Nandito sila para... maka-witness, maka...
Saksi.
Makasaksi ng ginagawa natin dito. And... Pwede ba, Madam Chair, babasahin ko lang mga pangalan ng mga...
Oo, sige.
Para maaknalis lang sila.
Okay.
Makita natin sila.
Okay.
Ah, nandito ang... Pakilala naman natin dito.
Oo.
Si Conselor Jan Michael Sino. Kailangan mo bang... An'yan siya na kawo. Siyang master ng lahat ng mga... Oro Youth being the chairman of the...
Okay.
Nandito rin si... Ikamuna. Gamitan mo na natin 'yan, Chuhus. Ah, Kyle Chester Kontakti.
Okay, pakpak tayo.
Siya ang sectoral co-chairperson in school youth sector. Ivan J. Laguna. In school youth sector. Jan Ray Dante. Patilgan Stephen. Aljimere Alia. Bakungis Res Franz David. Fornelos Anthony Francis. Takbu Bu Jan Ray. Katalbas Andrew. Rosales Mirasol. Nikulano Lemuel. Hannah Guiness Padilla. Katsula James. Alju Jan Erwin Ryugi. Lambatan Izel. Sentina Lord Xavier. Galarpay. Marjan. Obenza Al Joseph Carmel. And Labeta Reza May. Asila po, Madam Chairman. Di... Sila po 'yung nag... Nag... Susumpa kanina ang umaga.
Oo, kanina.
Doon sa flag racing natin.
Okay.
Nandito kayo.
Okay. Maraming salamat, Kagalanggalang Edgar Cabanlas, majority... Mataas na ma... Majority... Mataas na... Mataas na pangulo sa sala ng sesyon. Welcome. Welcome, mga estudyante sa Xavier. Maraming salamat sa pagpunta ninyo dito, pagbisita sa aming sesyon. Maraming salamat sa inyo. Pakpak na natin. Ah, Oro Youth pala. CDO Oro Youth Development Council. Tayo ay papakpak.
Ah, the chairman of the committee... The chair... The... Escape is requesting for an photo ops.
Okay. Kayo ay pupunta dito? Ah?
Mayay.
Reses.
Reses lang.
Reses.
Hindi naman sila magsasabi.
Oo, reses, okay. Ah, kayo ay... Kayo ay pupunta sa harapan lahat, Conselors? Ay, si katawan diya, Kyla. Ali, ali. Ah, mga... Ah, mga konsehal, kagalanggalang, dito tayo sa itaas. CDO. Okay. Okay na tayo? Uy, honey, dearie darling. Ali, 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 ali.
Gila-gila ba 'yun?
San kami itingin? Doon, sa harap.
Mayano, miss. Iyalgy, Vice.
May mo lagi. Ay, kung di saan ka magtagalog, basig ma... Matag technical, ka? Makikata ba 'yan? Lagi, magkabalik.
For the entire year, ni Vice, or?
Entire, gina. Hanawag kanina ang flag ceremony, di ba?
Nagi nagtagalog kanina.
Okay na? Okay. So, maraming salamat.
Good luck. Yes, Vice.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Okay na? Ah, Kagalanggalang Edgar Cabanlas, pwede pa tayo... Magpatuloy?
Or move to left, recess?
Reses, resume.
Session resume.
Ah, sesyon resume. Gadahan sa tagrises per mayay.
Now, the next part of our agenda is a special report. There are three Conselors who are requesting for time for a special report. I myself, Madam Chair, on the installation of cat's eye road studs on the national highways in Kageyandu City. Then, Conselor James Judith, suicide incidents at Maharlika Bridge. And three, Conselor Ian Mark Nakaya, rain water collection facility as a countermeasure against the El Nino phenomenon.
Proceed, Majority Floor Leader, Conselor Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon again. I mean, I mean everybody, I think everybody has been traversing all these highways within the cities of Kageyandu. Especially the national highway going to Manolo Fortiche and also the national highway, Recto Avenue going to the airport, to the... to Legindingan Airport. And also this highway, Masterson Road going to Lumbia. Vales Street, Vaminta, the old national highway going to Patag. And during...
And during pre-nation, during storm, if you are traveling these highways, madam Chair, you will have a very hard time maneuvering the, your car. It poses danger to the, ah, ah, drivers and also to the passengers. In fact, one time when I was traveling from Davao and upon reaching, ah, Manolo Forte, and there was a rain, cats and dogs, I have to, I have to put my head outside the, the window just to see the road. It's very dark. There is no, I mean, the, the paint that delineates the, 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 ah, si tawag na, 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 mga-
Lanes?
Lanes, mga lanes.
Yeah.
Wala na, hindi mo makita. You cannot see them. And that's the reason why we have a lot of accidents there. That's the reason why we have a lot of accidents in Tablon. And that's the reason why we have a lot of accidents in, in, ah, in Agusan and Lapasan. Why? Cars were traveling fast and there is no delineation between, ah, between the lanes. Now, we traveled from, ah, we traveled going to, to Lagindigan Airport and we saw this cat's eye and studs. And what was, and what is the effect? The effect is beautiful. You can see, see clearly the roads and you don't have to maintain and repaint again every time. The, the, the paint they have has faded away. So my suggestion, madam Chair, for purposes of aesthetics, ah, value, for purposes of safety, we would like to request the DPWH that all national highways should be provided with this cat's eye. Dito ka-tukas, atukas China, atukas kila mga kadalanan, atukal bisan asa, all over the world. In the modern cities, you can see cat's eyes being utilized. It illuminates the road and it gives beauty to the city, to the city. Wala mo kinapmanunay kanya't sa atong DPWH, dugin na meski binangga ay diya sa iba-baw. So I think we should urge the, the, the DPWH to do that. That every time they construct a national highway, please provide the cat's eye or the, what we call this, ah, road stud. And this request should not only for the DPWH, but also to our city engineering office. Kayo sa'yo, madam Chair, dito's mga hilip ng gada pit, wala'y suga, wala'y mga street lights, pero kung naay cat's eye, pati sa'yo kayo. Pati sa'yo kayo, pati sa'yo kika'ng effecto. That is my motion, madam Chair. Morana, kaya rin dito mataas.
Oh, salamat sa ulat, ah, mayoriya, Kagalanggalang Edgar Cabanlas, yes, comment, komento. Counselor Kagalanggalang Romeo Caliso, please.
Maraming salamat po sa ating Kagalanggalang na namumunong opisyal sa ating pagtitipon sa hapong ito. Ah, and the belated Happy Mother's Day, ah, Kagalanggalang na busy mayor ng ating lungsod.
Thank you.
If I have to define the cat's eye, it is a road stud. And, ah, it is the reflectorized one.
Yeah.
Because there are two types of road studs, ah, madam Chair. First is that one that is not illuminated and that one that is reflectorized. And the, the cat's eye is a substitute for the yellow lane. Because during daytime, the cat's eye is of no use. Because the yellow lane should be the one to be obeyed. Because the losses, the traffic losses, the, it, the yellow lane will not allow you to go, to swerve. So during nighttime, it's not only a, ah, guide for you to go to the right lane, but it's also a warning that you don't have to swerve by, ah, ah, what we call this, ah, by going to the other lane. Because it is considered the yellow lane, madam Chair. Now, in, ah, years back, in, ah, the committee meetings at the Committee on Infrastructure, madam Chair, this has been suggested. Ah, in fact, this has been also, ah, been the topic for discussion on the Committee on Roads and Traffic Management. But, ah, more often, the, ah, in fact, the city has planned for the installation of the cat's eye, ah, madam Chair, to help the motorists, especially during nighttime. And especially in support to, ah, the driving senior citizens, just like, Counselor Attorney Cabanlas. Ah, because it helps really, ah, the, the drivers, especially if it's rainy and it is with, ah, lower visibility, ah, madam Chair. But the problem is, ah, according to the planners, before we install the cat's eye, we should first, ah, improve our road nets, especially the highways. In Cagendoro, we have the primary highway that is from Ipunan going to Bugo. And we have the secondary highways. That one, the Masterson Avenue is a secondary highway, that one going to Talakag. From Bulwa to San Simon, which is supposed to be traversing towards Bagokbok to reach Opal and going to the hinterlands of Misamis Oriental, madam Chair, in the western side of, of, ah, the region. Problem is, ah, we don't have, ah, good road nets. If you compare to other cities, not even to the highly organized cities, just like General Santos, ah, Davao City, but also if you go to Kidapawan, to Tacorong, to Compost, to Coronal City, the road nets are good. And that's why the cat's eye are there. In Cagendoro, how can you pro- how can you install cat's eyes in a, in a, ah, highway, just like passing from Canituan, Pagatpat, Masterson Avenue? You cannot just install the cat's eyes in this type of road nets, ah, madam Chair. And therefore, ah, I really appreciate the report of, ah, ah, Counselor Cabanlas. And, ah, this should also be referred first, not only to, to the appropriate committees, not only to the roads and traffic management, but also on, ah, the Committee on Engineering and Infrastructure. You know, this has a good impact. If indeed, ah, this will be realized, madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kagalanggalang Romeo Caliso. Ah, I would, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Counselor Birthday Boy J. Pascual. Later, later, huh? Okay. So let's proceed, Counselor Kagalanggalang Ayan Atchas.
Ah, rejoinder, ah, madam Chair, ah, una sa lahat, ah, magandang hapon po sa tunggi ng Alkalde. Ang ating, ah, presiding, ano umuno ngayong hapon na ito, sa aking mga kasamahan sa konsyo. Ang ipahiwatig ko lang po ay isang rejoinder sa proposal po ni ginoong konsihal Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, na mangyari po lamang doon sa Sire Highway ng Barangay Puerto. It is a 12-kilometer stretch. We have already a, almost a superhighway. Ah, malapad na 'yung daan. Ah, with this 12-kilometer stretch, it has been observed, madam Chair, ah, mostly every week there is a vehicular accident. One of the reason, ah, wala tayong mga streetlights. Pangalawa, na kitna, obserban ko, ah, wala tayong mga studs. At the same time, sa haba-haba ng daan, no, ng highway, wala tayong mga slow down na mga traffic signs. Ito po, hangi- ah, hangat ko po nga maisali sa maong, sa, 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 sa maisali sa isa, sa, sa, sa maong, sa ordinan sa, nga ipinabot ng ating floor leader. Yun lang po, madam Chair, nahirapan akong magtagalog.
Salamat, Kagalanggalang Ayan. Pero magaling siya magtagalog, ha? Oh, malaki siguro ang grado niya sa Pilipino.
Dagang salamat.
Dagang salamat. Maraming salamat, hindi daghan. Eh, eh, ngayon, alam mo, pwede naman natin i- i- identify anong uunahin. Kasi hindi tayo maghintay na lahat talaga ng stress lalagyan ato ng cat's eye. Yung pwede na, pwede na, uunahin natin. Kaya hindi man 'yan pwede is sabay, di ba? Oh, oh, sino pa magkomentaryo? Okay, ah, Kagalanggalang Ibi Imano. Ayuhin mo ang, ayusin mo tagalog mo.
Magandang hapon po sa lahat. Maraming salamat, ah, madam Presiding Officer. Ako po ay maghihingi po ako ng paunawa kasi hindi po ako marunong mag-Pilipino.
Uy, bata ka pa, marunong ka dapat.
Yung aking Pilipino po ay tamang-tama lang na ako ay nakapasa, hindi bumalik. First of all, again, ah, thank you, madam Chair. Happy birthday, Counselor J. Happy festa to barangay Kauswagan, Kamamanan, Gusa, and Balulang, to name a few. And, ah, my, I raised my hand because I also have a rejoinder with, ah, special report of our Majority Floor Leader, Sir Edgar Cabanlas. And yes, we are, we, I am in favor of the cat's eye or the road stud. Because we have noticed that in the past few months, maybe even years, if I'm, if correct me if I'm wrong. I, I cannot, I'm sorry. I might not be able, ibaka hindi ko po maisabi 'yung gusto kong sabihin na gumagaling sa aking puso. I am very, ako po ay maghihingi ng paumanhin. So once again, we are in favor of the road stud. Because in the past few years, our highways, most especially, and our, ah, internal highways or second, secondary highways have been quite dim. If you drive from Bugo all the way to, ah, Ipunan, ah, madam Chair, the light is not as efficient on the, when you go over the, when you go through the overpass, on the highways in general. And I, we all believe in public safety, public road safety per se. Now, in part, aside from, ah, the cat's eye or the road stud, maybe we can also check or assess, maybe, ah, bring up as well, when we bring it to committee level, this concern, our streetlights as well.
Okay.
If it is okay. If I am not wrong, in the past year, our sodium lights, streetlights have been replaced with lead lights.
Yes.
And, ah, pertaining to this also, madam Chair, I was also, I, I was informed and I did check and it was confirmed that when we pay, Si Palco, our electric provider, for our streetlights, it is rated by post, by post, ah, by post ang payment sa atong billing sa streetlight. So if it was replaced from sodium light, which was more expensive, replaced with lead light, which is supposedly cheaper, maybe we can have, we can have an assessment or we can ask them if we are still paying for the same rate, given that, again, lead light is supposedly cheaper than the sodium lights. And also because a lot of our streetlights have not been functioning.
Okay.
If you go through Indahag, the diversion road from Kamamanan to Indahag, in the past couple of weeks, it wasn't just dark, but there were instances where the streetlights were actually blinking like that of Christmas lights. And this is a hazard, not just to our drivers or to the passengers, but as well as walkers. Now, those who walk on the sides of the street. So again, this is just a rejoinder, this is not of anything else. And it is not just Lagindigan, I'm sorry, going back to the cat's, it is not just Lagindigan. There is also in the 955 route, which is Claveria to Hingoog, which, by the way, they do not have, they do not have streetlights, but because of their road stud, reflectorized road stud, you get a clear vision where the roads end.
Yes.
So you are not afraid, nga, you will shoulder or you will fall on the side of the streets. And as, and also, it's not just aesthetic purposes, really, it's for road safety for those who are in their vehicles and for those who are walking on the sides of the street. So that's all. And dili lang senior citizens, ang gabriog bintana, maski ako gabrikog bintana just to make sure that, you know, everyone, not just my own safety, but the safety of everybody else are.
Okay.
So thank you.
Maraming salamat, Kagalanggalang Ibi Imano. Ito experience ko ito. Alam mo, ako, pamilya ko, apat kami, asawa ko, dalawang anak, land trip. Kagayan, Baya, ah, Takloban, Baya Manila. Ang next experience ko, in fact, coming back, Manila, Baya Batangas, Baya Cebu, Dumagete, Baya Kagayan. Ang nakakatulong talaga, kasi asawa ko ang nagda-drive, ang nakakatulong talaga is a road stud. Walang ilaw ang mga daan sa gabi. Kahit na anong oras sa ng gabi, pero ang nakakatulong talaga ang road stud. Yan talaga binabasehan ng asawa ko, saan papunta, Patungo. So ang laki ng ta- taban, ang laki ng tulong hanggang kami dumating, in fact, mindoro, maliit na lugar, meron ang road stud. Kahit saan pinakasulok, merong road stud. Tayo progressive na siyudad, dapat meron na rin tayo niyan para, para sa kapakanan, safety ng ating mga nagda-drive. Okay? Komentaryo pa, kayo? Wala na? Ah, Kagalanggalang Edgar Cabanlas.
Ah, okay, ah, madam Chair, ah, in addition to the suggestion of Counselor Evi, I think it's time for us to change our streetlights. Kabayad takaron, nagbabayad tayo, kahit walang, hindi umiilaw 'yung mga streetlights, I think 20 pesos per post. Why not change it to solar?
Correct.
I mean, all the cities in the Philippines, I think, the big cities, they're using solar. There is no maintenance. You only pay what, you only spend one time. Usiyakina besa, orugili, besa pa, bagyo pa. So I think it's time for us, I would like to refer this to the, ah, Committee on Traffic and Infrastructure, consider solar streetlights as a replacement of this Si Palco, ah, lead, ah, streetlights. Tadi kayo ang bisakas kapengon, siga ginabirmi, pakabot, ala 500000 siga, kina, kina nimo, atu-an pa, i-on, i-off. Ah, thank you, salamat.
Maraming salamat, Kagalanggalang Edgar Cabanlas. Experience din ito akin. Ako ay nakapunta ng deso capital ng China, lahat solar. Walang gumagamit ng ilaw, kahit aircon, five-star hotel, naka-solar yan, tayo'y pupunta doon. Obsebahan natin. Maganda, kahit ang motor naka-solar, kahit cellphone naka-solar, kahit, so ano pangbabayaran ng mga, ah, sa mga electric natin, eh, lahat. Kaya 'yung deso, deso is the capital, solar capital of China. Ang ganda, lahat solar ang ginagamit. Hopefully, tayo sa siyudad, matuto na tayong gumamit ng solar. Kahit sa sarili nating bahay, mag-install tanat solar para maliwanag, kahit sa mga daan, solar. Puta tayo na China. Maganda to talaga, oo. Oh, ano ang susunod, the Majority Floor Leader?
Ah, I think there is no serious objection to this request to the, ah, to the DPWH. We will make it as an additional agenda, but the solar, solar, the, ah, the solar be referred to the committee.
Okay, i-refer natin sa committee. Committee on? Public Works?
Public Works and.
Infra?
Infra, yes.
Infra, okay. Ah, Counselor, ah, John Michael Cenno, okay, maraming salamat.
So the second, ah, reporter, ah, madam Chair, is Counselor James Judith.
Ang ating, ah, maliit, oh, pangalawa, minority, pangalawang? Minorya, maliit na minority sa sala, sa session. Tinatawag ko si Kagalanggalang Attorney James Judith.
Tauskuso kung pagbati.
Malaki ang buses niya, hinan mo.
Nisang magandang araw sa'yo, B.C. Alcalde ng ating lungsod at Pangulo ng ating Sanggunian. Og sa atong tinahod ng mga kauban sa konseho, atong mga bisita, nga naadya karoon, sa likod gabahin sa atong session hall, sa atong tinanggang katauhan sa dakbayan, sa kagedoro, sa inyong tanan, maupay. Ang Marcos Bridge isa, sa napulo kamangatulay din eh sa atong dakbayan. Apil na ni ini, ang wapan at ibawas nga Bonbon Makabalang Bridge. Ang official nga Cani pangalan ni ini, Marcos Bridge, mauman ang Philippine-Japanese Friendship Highway Bridge. Og ngaano na himok ni ni Marcos Bridge, kaitungod matup pa sa akong Cani Professor sa Administrative Law, Cani Mayor Concordio Cording Deal. Cani Mayor sa atong dakbayan, matup pa. Ang, kung siya pabuton, ang gusto niya, ang pangalan sa maong tulay, Marcos Bridge. Taliwala nga gi pangalan kini, nga Philippine-Japanese Friendship Highway Bridge. Kaya matup pa niya, tili malalis nga ang amahan sa atong kasamtangan nga Presidente Bonbon Marcos. Ang iyang amahan, mo may hinungdan sa pagkatukod sa maubaling tulay. Kaya matup pa, ni Cani Mayor Concordio Cording Deal. Siya ang kitahang niyo sa Presidente sa Pilipinas atong panahon, nga pabutong ag, ikanduhang tulay ang atong dakbayan, kaya nagkalapag na kini, kay bunog na ang Isalina Bridge. Og wakonoy sa paglangan, gehatag ni Presidente Marcos, gigahinan ug pundo, og natukod ang maong tulay. Apan dili ka na ma o ang gilangkuhan sa akong special report, karong apuna, kundi kabahin sa sunod-sunod na nga mga paghikog or suicide attempts sa maong tulay. Ang pangutana, unsa bang talinghaga or misterio, ang naglimin o nagtukmod sa atong mga kaiksunan nga adunay bukat na problema, both namang kitilon or nuso na nila kinabuhay, pinaagi sa pagambak sa maong tulay. Gani sa atong talaan, pipila na ang mga naghikog nini, na'y naghikog atong April 18, kasamtangan tuig. Nasundan atong April 24, nasundan apod, atong April 25, pero napugnan. Gesundan apod pagkasunod apod sa April 30, na napuibot maghikog, pero napugnan. Dito napud 30 sa Mayos 6, na'y kumadumduman, ay duha kamanga naalaan, bali nga maguyap, nga nagambak sa maong tulay. Puro mga batanon, ang usa babae, dali, nadala dito sa Balay Tambalan, og nalwas, apan ang lalaki huntod karoon, missing pagyapon. Sundan dayon atong Mayon 9 na ay nagatemp, napugnan. Mayos 13 na'y nagatemp, napugnan. Akong dakong pagpasalamat. Kay mismo si Mayor Rolando Clarix, uy, nagsaad man. Ngabutangan na niya, papatasan niya, ang kitawag na to nga guard railing sa maong tulay. Dakon na tong pasalamat, kaya nagresponde ang atong mayor. Apan inani karoon ang problema. Nasayod ma taon sa kalangan ang gobyerno sa pagtubag sa maubaling nga atong sugyot sa atong mayor. Abtan pata, og samsam. Kabaluman putang, ang kining problema sa hikog, dili na ginikinalanan nga madugay. Wala tay solution nga long term nini, pero aduna tay solution nga pangkaroon lang. Og maukini ang atong sugyot. nga kung mahimo, imbis nga guard railings nga atong ibutang sa tulay, aron mapugnan ang but maghikog nini. Pwede ba butangan na lang na to og net, nga ang dakbayan mo gasto, diya sa ubos gabahin sa tulay? Og ikadua gabahin, simple lang. Cani may kalabutan sa Committee on Disaster Preparedness and Resilency nga gi pangluhan ni Consial Burney Esparsa, kaysa imo naman ni nakabutang Burns. nga kung mahimo, dili lang ang atong pulis ang magbantay. Inabagan bali sa mga tanod, sa mga nagadayang barangay, nga gilangkuhan sa maong tulay. Kung dili, kinalan naapod ang mga sakyanan sa user or mga personay sa user, con urban search and rescue. Kaya nga naman, kay dili naman ingon sa pagbantay, nga ilabaling mapugnan ang but maghikog. Dabi ang pangutana, kung nakalikay, kung diretso na kaambak, og kinalan nga dalon sa Balay Tambalan, kinalan naa ang user. Aron maluwas na to sila, isip first responders or kitawag na to first aid sa maubaling nga kikinalan sa atong mga kaiksunan nga but maghikog or magambak diya ng maong tulay. Busa, at this juncture, Madam Chair, I respectfully move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Disaster Preparedness and Resilency chaired by the Honorable Councillor Malvern Esparsa. Dini na lakukuto, dagang salamat, Madam Chair, og astang Kagayan dioro.
Maraming salamat, Councillor Kagalanggalang Attorney James Judith. Yes, Kagalanggalang Attorney Joey Abu.
May be allowed to speak in the?
No.
English, your, Madam Chair. Kung sa ganun, di, magtatagalog po.
O sige, sige, okay.
Anyway, Madam Chair, um, in, I understand the statement of the good Councillor James Judith. Uh, nga angay, na umut, na sikat kayo ni Marcos Bridge lately, no? In fact, napod ri, magupod sa Kagayan Bridge, kina Sir Mayro Tonda, na'y nag-atemp, I think, kagahapon apod, pero maayaw kinapugnan. But uh, suicide can happen anywhere. It can happen not only by jumping over the bridge, it can happen even inside your room, inside your car or anywhere. But uh, what's important is that we try to give importance and attention to this matter. Um, mas lalumpaan ng mga inanang aklasis ang precautions. Now, I understand, Madam Chair, that we have this city ordinance that we have, the mental health ordinance. In fact, this is authored by the Presiding Chair as well. Uh, I just observed, Madam Chair, for, this is just a point of inquiry for clarification, and hopefully we can do, if there be any uh, need to add. I, I read through the said ordinance and I, and I just found out that, in fact, the beneficial owner of this is the arts diocese. And uh, the LGU is the legal owner. But uh, it's defined here under section for the definition of terms. Section four, paragraph J. Mental health professionals refer to those persons who, with formal education and training in mental health and behavioral sciences such as, but not limited to psychiatrists, psychologists, psychiatric nurse, or psychiatric social workers. And if you try to refer again to section five, uh, this is the mental health system of Kagedi Oro. And the, the leading departments that we have here are the City Health Office, the JR Borja General Hospital, and the Northern Mindanao Medical Center. If I may just suggest, or first inquire, Madam Chair, and also to the Chair of the Committee on Health, if our hospitals, because it is also stated here in this ordinance that in these hospitals, we will establish a psychiatric.
Acute, anin chronic?
No, 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 the, break office, clinic. Oh, if there is already uh, an, a clinic for this psychiatric mental problems, ang mga servers, servers, maganda 'yan term, dery?
Yeah.
Servers, and uh, if naan na ba siya? If naa, do we have psychologists or psychiatrists assigned there? And if there is none, if I may add, Madam Chair, if there is or there is none, can we also add here probably the city social welfare development? Because I understand that the social, uh, social, city social welfare development, naaapta 'yung mga psychologists and psychiatrists available there. So uh, it's, and uh, sa mga inani nga klasi pod, mga debriefing, it's more on the, even in the national scope, it's more on the social welfare department or division ang ga, ga cater aning mga inani, especially ka na mga stress debriefing, ka na tay problem sa mental, um, mental illness or sa ka na mga mental problems or ka na psychological na kuwan. Um, may I ask, just, that's, that's my question, Mr. Madam Chair. Do we have already this psychiatric uh, um, office or clinic or department in the JR Borja General Hospital and the NMMC? If there is, do we have psychologists and psychiatrists assigned there? If there is or if there is none, can we also add the social, uh, city's social welfare department to be included in the ordinance? Since we all, we also have, uh, uh, we also have available a psychiatrist in the, in the local government unit. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Attorney, let me, let me call my co-author now, Council, Councillor Lordes Gani.
May hapon ka na tong tanan. I'm sorry, um, I will just speak in Bisaya. Tagalog. Anyway, um, we have the acute psychiatric unit first sa JR Borja, but it was recently transferred to the House of Hope, considering na ang manpower from the Department of Health were pulled out para makakoncentrate sa atong G-dang areas. So functional ang atong acute psychiatric unit nga naaakaroon sa House of Hope. Now, ang gaman ani ang atong usaka psychiatrist in the person of Dr. Una Aguilar. And as far as CSWD is concerned, uh, we also have our psychosocial unit karoon. Uh, ang nagdalaan ni karoon is our psychologist in the person of Dr. Jamie Lune. So, mula na siya, actually, gusto lang ako ipasabot sa tanan nga. In handling mental health, it's not only, um, treatment diretsyo. First and foremost, we go into steps, a process, like, una ang counseling. So we have our psychosocial unit nga naaunder sa CSWD. So daghan ang kaboto na na, storya, kailangan og process ano. After which, kung kailangan again og treatment or management, that is the time nga gay refer ang patient to our acute psychiatric unit. In fact, our JR Borja Hospital has been coordinating with same pulse of Davao City, uh, and, um, Davao City Mental Hospital. For those patients nga dili na gyud kaya na to sa treatment here, nga atog yun ga ipadala sa Davao City. So ang ako lang siguro, awareness atong katauhan nga naaggy proseso ani para mabauan nila. So ang ako is refer patients, in fact, ka ganina during the flag racing, this was raised by our psychologist, Dr. Lune, during the flag racing na kailangan unsa 'yung mga signs na, na ay depression ang ko sa katao. And I hope nga, masabdan sa atong katauhan na, naatay during officers na ay, um, hotline number na pwede ma-refer sa atong psychosocial unit. And after 5:00 PM, pwede na to ma-refer sa 911, our CDR. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor. Uh, can I, can I expound a little bit, then I will call you, okay? My ordinance is focusing on the comprehensive community base. What do you mean? We start on a barangay. Now, in fact, it was already budgeted by the, our mayor, no? Wala pa lang ang implementing rules and regulations. But then I want to explain that it should be, it will start on the barangay. That is precisely why city health is involved. With the barangay as community base for our assessment and evaluation of our, uh, of our cases of mental condition, then, that is where the barangay starts to assess, evaluate, then proceed to the, uh, the partners like JR Borja and NMMC. The problem now is we haven't started with the community base. If you have to check on it, community base, kaya diha man ang muyo ang atong mga residente, and they're under the barangay health workers. The by ordinance says that this barangay health workers will be trained. Kay dili man, this is a very sensitive issue dealing with the mental condition. It train una sila, not with only barangay workers, but then the academ, the teachers, the guidance counselors, ano nga barangay. When they will be able to be trained, then they will be able to assess each, uh, those who are living in the barangay, assess if at acute cases, they go to JR Borja, Northern Mindanao. Galing ka, wala pa ang JR Borja, we have already, our psychol, psychiatrists, same way with NMMC, pero wala pa't admission. So ang atong mga patient eh will go, not patient, I'm sorry, we do not call them patient anymore. Our server will go to the, karonsa, will go to the House of Hope. House of Hope should be a case for chronic, chronic ka nagabalik-balik na. And then until they are stabilized sa House of Hope, then our main goal now is for them to go back to the community as a, as a productive citizen of the community. Maugina ang goal na to. So somehow, uh, this ordinance had been, uh, already been enacted on June 6, 2022. I want to make, to stress important matters. And according to section 14, on the appointed members of Kagedi Mental Health Board, and section 36, on the formulation implementing rules and regulations of said ordinance, our ordinance expressly provides that this must be done within 90 days after its enactment or last September 6, 2022. Okay? So this is not only an executive. In section five of the ordinance, which states, "The executive and legislative offices shall be the front runners in the promulgation of programs implementation guidelines of achieving a healthy mental health state of its constituents." I will be writing to the mayor, kay I know the mayor already, uh, had already put, what you call, budget for this, so that we can really start community base para guapo ang flow sa atong comprehensive, comprehensive mental health program. Sa pakakaroon, wala pa, kay wala pa mangyod na, uh, na draft ang internal rules and regulations. I hope that with Councillor Lordes Gani and me, Councillor Gani is my co-author, we don't have to wait for the executive. Then we can proceed, and Councillor Gurli Balaba, we can proceed already in calling our doctors, JR Borja, City Health, and our, what you call this? NMMC, our partners, pwede na na to ipatawag, so we can already, uh, have this draft of internal rules and regulations, then present it to the mayor para makasugod na gyud tag budget or implement sa atong mental health program. Are we okay with that, Councillor Gurli and Councillor, uh, Lordes Gani? Yes, please, Councillor Lordes Gani, please.
I asked Dr. Lune regarding the IR, the implementing rules and regulations on the mental health code two weeks ago. And he told, and she told me na, ang medyo galisod siya og, convince atong mga psychiatrists, considering na there are only four active psychiatrists here nga naadini sa Kagayan dioro. Um, uh, please be aware na, um, gapaning kamutod ang atong psychiatrists. Actually, the, uh, our psychiatrist was the one who drafted our, uh, our ordinance regarding on the mental health code with, um, our Vice Mayor and Gurli Balaba, Consial Gurli Balaba. And lisod, ang, lisod ga convince si Dr. Jamie, pero hopefully, hopefully, for the next few days, ato na ning mahimo ma, uh, ang atong IRR.
Yes, our Councillor Lordes Gani, probably we can start with us councilors and then invite them, so that ato ng mahimo na ang draft for the internal rules and regulations. Yes, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. May tagi't da, no, okay, kaya na vice, no? Um, um, to my colleague, uh, Councillor Doktora, I understand that the, there are steps that how to go through with this kind of problems, no? The first one is counseling. Uh, and as previously mentioned a while ago, medyo na tay problema, a little bit of, shortage sa psychiatrists, no? If we go through counseling, um, pwede, ang nakabutan mo sa definition sa mental professional, health professionals, dili man siya, an, ka na psychiatrists, and, kuan, it's or. So pwede ta either, so one of it is a psychiatric nurse or psychiatric social worker. So pwede ang social worker yapon in the absence of a psychiatrist. So since there is a shortage of number for to cater nga ka na mga psychiatrists to cater. to cater this problem, probably we can also tap the city's social welfare. Kina mantay mga social worker nga mokanang part sa mga debriefing yapon ano at the same time. And so, last lang ah move, Madam Chair. I'm not really sure kung unsa atong referral ni Counselor James, kaganina I think was referred to the committee on disaster.
Disaster? Yes, disaster.
If I make a subsidiary motion, Madam Chair, to that matter, I think this matter should be referred more properly to the Committee on Health and social services as well.
Yeah.
Because this matters, this matter involves more on the mental health issue. It's more of a health issue. So it should be properly referred to the Committee on Health. And since we are trying to look into the possibility of including the city's social welfare department office, then I think also, we can also ask the Committee on Social Services to join us well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let me comment on these partners, no? We cannot be partnering anybody who is not into the mental health program. Dili ni basabasta, no? Precisely why we have conduct, we have to conduct seminars and training so that the words that comes out from their mouth should be, uh, what you call this? Kanang nakabaloo na sila. We cannot just be having those counseling from anybody. Kay this are very sensitive topic and sensitive issue. So ang ato gyod is that if and when, I know Mayor Clarex who is very supportive with the program, giba jita namang ganini, so we can already start, no? With a seminar, seminar on mental health program, those who are our partners. So makasugod nagyuddayunta sa atong comprehensive mental health program. Uh, yes, Counselor Roger Abadai, you recognize?
Salamat po, kagalanggalang BC Alcalde, Presiding Officer, mga kagalanggalang na member sa 28th Council. Ang lahat na ni karinig, nananginig. Paumanin lang, hindi ako maka, uh, maka.
Nakikinig, ganun, narusa?
Nakikinig, wala.
Naginig?
Listening, and watching us today, no? Paumanin lang, hindi ako marunong masyado magsalita ng Pilipino, kasi mutaun pa ko sa Manila. Mutaun magtuig pa, mutaun, bruh. Ganun ba? Anyway, patsada ang kuwan, very good. Maganda 'yung special report and comments, so. And I learned that the author of this ordinance is not least than our Vice Mayor now, no? Vice Mayor Juslin Rodriguez. And I have one of, also contribute some suggestion, no? That this ordinance was crafted, no? Actually, we do not blame entirely the bridge. Because the bridge was built there, it has its own standard, its own weight, and its own... Di ni mo na basta dugangan, kulangan, ang tulay diya kay, dili kadula sama, nae madistor tang yang, kuwan ba? Nae design, engineering design, no? We cannot blame the bridge, but the best in one of the comprehensive program, wala lang masampit, no? And I've said this, in academic, under academic studies, one of the causes of suicide is psychologically distress or emotion ang bata. And who is the best agency that will detect the character and behavior of the child? One is the family, is the parents. The parents is the best detector to their child, whether there are problems, suffering from any problems. So may bauan sa karakter or batasan sa bata, kung dunay problema ang bata, diya man gyod makost po. So the parents should have to know, intervene, counseling, to always keep in contact with the child. And aside from the parents, is, the school also has a part of this comprehensive, kuwan, plan in order to check or to hinder child from this suicide. Because suicide, this is the last resort of a person if he has nothing to think anymore, no? Monang problema, so that mona pa 'yung usgan na to siguro. Mga ginikanan, the family, you have to check your children, no? Whether you have to talk every now and then? So that you will be able to anticipate whatever plans or of your child. Kay, ganyan, uban, kanan na hikong na ay ang mga suicide notes, ipagwanit, puluskin problema. So although I am agreeing, ang kanang bridge is one of the best opportunity of those people who commit suicide, kay, open man, di ba? But we will, we will love the engineering bureau, and we will do something that, that will also, kuwan, maka dugang diya para nga madiskarish sa ang mga kanang geplo. But not totally that you add on anything there on the bridge because that might distort the engineering structure of that bridge. So, kinalan, ibalan si kina, yanun lang, yeah.
Thank you very much, Counselor Abadai. True, parents should be involved with their children. Open your line of communication to your children. Assess, evaluate, see the red flag to your children. If your children is different from what you have been observing here him or her before, then you notice something different, red flag, evaluate, assess, go to professional help. Yes? Counselor Bernie Spasha?
Magandang hapon, Madam Chair. Sa lahat po ng mga kasamaan ko, mga Consial, sa lahat po ng nakikinig niyan sa online, andito po ngayon sa ating sesyon. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Madam Chair. Sumasang-ayon po ako sa dalawang, dalawang Consial, dahil meron silang dalawang, ano ba 'yung side? Una, kay Attorney James Judith, ang suggestion niya kasi is, para bang kung, kung sa accidente pa first aid, merong urgent. Siguro, ay, ay also, also, ako po'y sumasang-ayon din kay Attorney Abu, dahil ang gusto niya is, siyempre, ito talaga 'yung pang long term, not anong gawin natin. Like I said, una, 'yung sa urgency. Ah, ay, ay, ay also say yes to the, sige, lagyan natin ng ano, para lang, just in case kung diyan talaga ang favorite na location, baka pwede dahil, kasi tama rin, if the person wants to go suicide, pwede naman siyang pumunta sa highway na lang siya, magpabanga siya, or something like that. But I know that's parang urgency. Now, ito lang nakikita ko, on the urgent side, Madam Chair. First, masyadong nasensationalize sa social media at sa ating mga kasamaan sa media ngayon, ang suicide. I remember when I was still active with my former station, ABS-CBN, we always have, we always have these guidelines for ethical and responsible reporting and portrayal of suicide in the media. To be honest, Mr. Chair, if you will report, we will post something. This is according, meron talagang studies nito. If you are reporting on another suicide, you are encouraging other people to go to, to, you know, do the same. Unfortunately, kasi dati, kuwan, ramantibre raman, ang problema na to koron, Mr. Chair, ang social media, dagay gusto mo share, parang excited kita, nga kita'y makauna, og' pos, kita makalabay, mag-live dayunta. I think, I don't know if, what we can do, if kailangan ba tag resolution about it? Na kung pwede, even pictures galing, Madam Chair, diita pwede magpakita sa mga tao, niya na. Now, ikadwa, it was very nice na matoto sa health, but you know, it's about time for Kageyan di Oro. Let's have a one big campaign, one big campaign, panawagan na to tanan sektor, gikan sa, gikan sa barangay, eskwelahan, employers, government officers, even simbahan. Let's have one message, and what's that message? Exactly, iyun iko ya Roger Abadai. That one message, let's go back to the family. Kumusta oh na to tong pamilya? Maybe, I don't know, this is just for me, Mr. Chair. Ah, Madam Chair, maybe this is the result also for the pandemic na tungo kina sobraan na ang mga ginikanan sa pagapa sa mga judit. Judit sa tubig, judit sa kurienti, unsa pagbuhi. Maybe this is also one effect, nawala na ang atong pagtanaw sa pagbantay sa atong mga anak. And now, this is, muna akong gusto, maybe let's have one campaign. Atong ipanawagan, lahat ng mga influencers or lahat ng mga leaders, again, utron ako, on the barangay, on the schools, opisina, employers, to maybe encourage them. Ano nga tayo, parang team building ba, or seminar, or just, just to listen and tell the parents and even our youth leaders? Let's talk about this issue para magkaiu sa tanan. And I think that would be, I don't know kung asan na to napweding ang komitida, mabotang, Mr. Chair, but I will also go back sa katong, sa kuangakomitiba. Because, Mr. Chair, ang last na to ang victim, it's already eight days until na wala pa yapon makita. That's why also, I want also to tackle this on my committee because kumusta oh na to, ang atong pagresponding sa mga river accidents? Kumusta man ta? Unsa ba'y atong mga gamit pang rescue? I mean, the real situation now, for Kageyan di Oro, we have a, dili lang man suicide, just in case lang kung ay accidente, what happens? Unsa ba'ka expert atong mga tao, nabatay mga tao nga makarrespondig dali? Nabatay standby rescue vehicle? And our CCTVs nga na duol sa mga tulay, they're not functioning. Maybe, again, this is the urgent thing na tong buhaton blang para kay murag nasikat, manggyod kay ni siya. Then, again, the same with Attorney Joey Abu, more than tong buhaton for the long term. We have this urgent and the long term, Mr. Chair. Again, on the move, also mupuna compare, tana, ma-maismutan sa akong komitiba, ang real dia, ang realidad, ang situation. Kailangan pa ba ta og't tabang yud sa, unsa niya tong kuwan? Kaning military nga kuwan po't magskuba?
Coast Guard?
Coast Guard. Sometimes mabalo pa tabang sa Coast Guard. Exactly. So kung kita lang ba, there is a CDR or MD, ato lang sa puna, kumusta oh, unsa man po'y realidad sa atong sitwason, Mr. Chair. I don't know lang, on that, again, on that campaign, Mr. Chair, hopefully, why not magbuhatag usaka campaign, panawagan na to ni tanan? Para again, ako, I strongly suggest, which I know my colleagues will support, na, let's go back to the family, Mr. Chair. Kumusta oh na to sila?
Okay, thank you very much. So refer the committee, Committee on Disaster Environment. Uh, I have already last two, huh? I will allow Counselor Jay Pasqual. Yes, you recognize?
Magandang hapon po, Madam Chair, and sa kasamaan ko sa city council. Um, di ko ko kabagong tagalog, Madam Chair. Uh, so I will just speak in our native tongue. So ang ako lang, Madam Chair, is force multiplier. Since upatraman kaha lang ang atong psychiatrists din sa city, like what the police did sa atong mga barangay tanod, basin pwede pod na to ang DEEP ED atong matap, because naaman na sa schools ang ato ang mga guidance counselors, no? Na kung dili mabantayan sa mama sa balay, I think naagyo na'y mabantayan sa eskwelahan. Kay since our schools are our second home. So I think ang mga classmates or atong mga teachers manutis gina nila nga, naagit siguro problema ning bata, kay kuwan man niligo, or wala naman ni siya nagdala og' mga bag, wala, wala na'y kaon, or murag depressed gini siya nga bata. Murag, sige lang og' og' payo sa kilid. So I think dapat ang awareness sa mga teachers and students sa ato ang mga schools is very important in this hour fight for the depression, no? So ma-report din na to sa CSWD, ma-refer din na to sa ato ang schools para matabangan tanan. So ang atong goal din he is magtinabangan man. So I hope ang DEEP ED is one of the mga force multipliers nga atong matap para matambagan, matabangan ato.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jay Pasqual, the birthday boy.
Sorry, can Madam Chair, and one more. Um, I hope the Committee of Family Relations will also be included, no?
Yes, okay, yes. So actually, I will be having my summit. The Vice Mayor's Office will be having my summit, involving the Guidance Council Schools, in different schools, no? So we can start on that, no? While wala pa lugar na in place, ato implementing rules and regulations. Yes, Counselor, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Allow me to speak in English and in our dialect. Thank you very much. Anyway, this is beyond, beyond infrastructure. But I agree to some extent with the proposal of Counselor James Judith, to some extent. But if we do that, we have to do it all other infrastructure, which has an open space that may be pitiful to any and all suicidal tendencies, Madam Presiding Officer. And experts would tell us on psychiatry that this is a social ill, just like a drug dependency, the issue on public safety. And when it is a social ill, Madam Presiding Officer, all and the entire civil society must react to this issue objectively. When we say civil society, it does not mean the private sector or only in the academy, only in the family institution, but also includes the government and the entire people which compose the constituency of a local government unit. In other words, the response must be done effectively according to the scheme and plan of all things under the guidance perhaps of the mental code, which has been, already been enacted by, by the city council, authored by the Presiding Officer and some other members. And therefore, we already have the grand plan. And it only requires attention and dedication to implement. However, we find it fitting to implement according to the resources that we may have. That would be a part and function of the authors perhaps, the members of the council who may, would like to involve in the focus of arresting the situation, which has already been an issue to some period of time. And therefore, the call to have an advocacy may be one of the strategies that may be imposed to the public, that we should stand as one. In fact, albeit any death in the future, we should react according to the grand plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya. Let us proceed, I'm sorry, but we have to proceed. Uh, Counselor, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, you recognize?
Okay, so we go, which ready for?
Yes, we have the, the next speaker?
Next speaker, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Okay, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, who leads the council. Good afternoon. The temperature right now, not in the mids, Madam Presiding Officer, is 34 degrees Celsius. And according to some experts, it might feel like it's 45 degrees Celsius. And it has been coming and recurring back and forth for several weeks already. And in fact, the pagasa, Madam Presiding Officer, in its website has already mentioned that the recent conditions and model forecast indicate that El Nino may emerge in the coming season, June, July, August of this year. And 80% of this model would tell them that it would persist even first quarter to second quarter of next year. In other words, there is a scientific evidence that would tell us that there is indeed an El Nino. The hot temperature is already within the environment of not only in Kageyan di Oro, but the entire archipelago of the Republic. And there are, and I would like to focus on the farmers, Madam Presiding Officer. The marginalized sector, in fact, it is the... The marginalized sector, in fact, it is the, the the most margin among margins in the society of the entire country. The farmers, who are greatly, who would be greatly affected by this ilinino. And one of the strategies that we should require from our, perhaps Apo. Perhaps according to Counselor J. Obo. And some other sectors in the civil society who would entrust and contribute to, to the establishment or even design of a rainwater facility in the farm. Rainwater facility in the households, rainwater facility in institutions. Where there are buildings and infrastructures implemented or having been implemented or already in the offing to implement this, the infra project, Madam Presiding Officer. I have talked with some experts in the USTP, who incidentally, I was in USTP to launch the, the project. Of the joint project that we have had on solid waste management and the Center Director of the Technology Center of USTP approached me. That they can also help design a rainwater facility in the farms. Maybe perhaps we can tap the, this center. So that we can fast-track any and all activities that we can help and contribute to the to ease out this ilinino according to the conditions besetting in, in, in the hinterland barangays, in the farm areas, Madam Presiding Officer. And maybe perhaps Apo can also contribute and campaign, fund, put seed money to help our farmers put up this type of facility. To help them reduce the impact of ilinino with water resources coming from rain, Madam Presiding Officer. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So what is your prayer, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya?
To the Committee on Agriculture.
Committee on Agriculture. Please refer to Counselor J. Pasqual. Okay, thank you very much. Let's proceed, Counselor, Majority Floor Leader. Counselor J. Pasqual, would you'd like to, okay, you're recognized?
Magandang hapon po, Madam Chair. Um, gamay lang ako, Madam Chair. Um, ang ato ang manggod, ang sabukid, Madam Chair. We have been doing the water collecting. Actually, ginagamit na mo is kawayan lang ug mga baril. So probably, dako kayo na ug ikatabang, no? If the city would, um, murag i-incorporate na to sa atong Obo nga office. Na dapat sa atong mga designs, puhon sa atong mga buildings and houses. Magamit manggod na to na ang rainwater. Dako kay nagikatabang sa tubig, atong bayronon sa tubig. If ever nga, kung atong ipangbu-bu sa atong mga tanom, katung atong mga nakolekta sa ulan. Atong panglimpyo sa atong sakyanan, ipanghuga sa atong mga plato. But of course, dili gina to na mainong. But of course, magamit na to in a lot of our daily activities. So hopefully, we will, um, in the proper time, makahimo-taug ordinance na may incorporate na to sa ato ang building code. Dinisa dakbayan sa Kageyan di Oro.
Yes, thank you very much. Actually, we have this green building code. Hopefully, this will be approved. So that naadihan ang pagkoan, pamaagi, no, to recycle water. So I, do we need the reservoir for that? Dako, good. We don't have any in Kageyan?
Madam Chair, ang kuwan, manggod na to, ang plan na to ah, Madam Chair, is magtagsa-tagsa sa balay na asilay dako nga drum para sa ilang own personal
Sa ilalansak, okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor, yes, uh, Counselor Attorney Judith, yes, make it fast.
Yes, Madam Chair, ang ako lang is, naanamo ko'y balaw dan na RA six seven one six, ang rainwater collection and springs development act of nineteen eighty-nine. Siguro din na tayong dagan pa, napatay complimentary ordinance nga atong ipasa or resolution kabayaniana. Ang ato lang siguro ang papatuman o paghatal memorandum sa atong mga nag, mga department heads, sa atong mga kabarangay, mga officialis sa kabarangayan nga ipatuman ang RA six seven one six. So sakto tong special report ni Kunsial Ian Mark Nakaya, nga naanas ang atong himo, labi ng nga naayto'y ipaabot nga ilinino.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Attorney James Judith. Yes, Counselor, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, let's proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, we, we just refer that to the Committee on Agriculture for the proper implementation program. Uh, business of the day. Items, I, one and two. Uh, third please.
For omnibus approval, items one and two. Item one is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eight one. Returning to the sangguniyang kabataan of barangay Agusan, this city's resolution number three, series of twenty twenty-three. Covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of two million eight hundred forty-nine thousand and five hundred eighteen pesos. Item number two is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eight two. Returning to the sangguniyang kabataan of barangay Bulwa, this city, its resolution number zero zero three, series of twenty twenty-three. Covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of three million nine hundred twenty-four thousand and six hundred sixty-eight pesos. With the information that said resolutions are operative in their entirety. Committee sponsors, committee sports and youth development and committee on laws and rules.
Um, may I request, Madam Chair, that Counselor Jan Michael Seno be recognized?
Kagalanggalang, Jan Michael Seno, please.
Magandang hapon po, Madam Presiding Officer. Um, I assume for the approval of the set resolutions.
Segundo, pagtutol. Walang tumutol? Ito ay ipapasa na.
Move to dispense, she cannot, move to approve, she can final reading, Madam Chair.
Segundo, walang tututol. Wala, ito ay ipi-ipapasa na.
Item three, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eight three. Interposing objection to the for sure lease application of Gamma Foods Corporation, covering a parcel of land with an area of three thousand nine hundred eighty-seven square meters. Adjacent to its property covered by lot one A, one, dash A, dash one, dash four, dash five, ah, dash B, dash five, dash B, dash one. Title one three seven, twenty-one zero zero zero, six nine nine, lot one A, one, dash A, dash, dash four, dash B, dash five, dash B, dash two. Title number one three seven, twenty, nineteen zero zero, eight four four six. Uh, Lot number one A, dash four, dash B, dash five, dash three. Title one three, title number one three seven, twenty nineteen zero zero, eight four, four seven, located at port ten. Situbalo barangay Tablo, this city, subject to the conditions imposed by the City Environment and Natural Resources Office, CLNRO. City Engineers Office, City Planning and Development Office. Another government agency, Mary, request that Counselor Roger Abaday be recognized, Madam Chair.
Kagalanggalang, Roger Abaday, please.
Marami pong salamat, Madam Presiding Officer, Majority Floor. I move to approve our resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eight three. For approval.
May magsegundo? May tututol? Inquiry? Yes, dagan maninyo? Ah, oo. Okay, ah, kagalanggalang ibi mano?
Magandang hapon po ulit, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I am not, for the record, I am not against the interposing no objection, but I do have a query. Uh, in the pa, in the last session, May eight specifically, we had an inclusion wherein we state, we all agreed or voted on, approved, by the way. Uh, that there will be no longer any, uh, sorry, let me read it. A resolution must pass, resolution number one four five eight one two zero two three. Resolution earnestly requesting the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Region ten to suspend the processing of for sure lease application, covering any and all areas from barangay Lapasan to barangay Bogo, effective June one, twenty twenty-three. In view of the proposed land reclamation project thereat of the City Government of Kageyan di Oro. Although the effectiveness of this resolution will still be on June one. I would just like to ask, what would be the impact if we approve this, um, this resolution to the public entities, to Gamma Farms, as well as to us in the city government? It's just an inquiry, Mr. Chair.
Okay, kagalanggalang, Edgar Cabanlas, yes.
Uh, Madam Chair, we, the original plan was to defer this matter, in fact because of our intention to develop uh, the coastal area for relocation, for reclamation purposes. But then, we realized that Gamma Farm is one of the biggest contributor to the economic activity of the city. Daku ang nila na tabang, and in fact, they are supplying not only the city of Kageyan di Oro, but the entire island of Mindanao, and now the Visayas of all these poultry products. And they need this, uh, this, uh, this for sure lease facility to, to deliver with dispatch, uh, this chicken, mano, Kunsial Nakadia. Now, Madam Chair, the, in our last meeting with the uh, the, the Committee on Reclamation, the board subdivision, Committee of Subdivision. We decided that we will approve this, this will be the last. Because after all, this application was already endorsed to us for approval. Even before the creation of the Reclamation Authority. So murag lo ipod nga vested interest has it in. And to deny this would be unfair also to Gamma Farms, uh, to Gamma Foods. So muna nga, uh, naunam ang aning atong, nauna ang atong resolution, but I, I, I said, I suggested that this resolution that would request this DNR to hold in a B and S O applications for for sure lease, uh, for for sure lease should be effective June one, two thousand twenty-three. To actually accommodate this, kaya kung ato sinang iapprove during the time we approve the, the ordinance, then magisusod na ni pag-approve. So that's the reason. Uh, that's the reason why we have to move back.
So, uh, Mr. Secretary?
And, and, and we put a condition to the approval, to the approval. We require the, the, the Gamma and affidavit of undertaking, which they have submitted, do kay magunila na submit ni? Because we require them to submit an undertaking. That if we pursue our plan to, uh, to, to, to construct a reclamation, uh, project there at the area. They are willing to dismantle and remove this for sure lease facility that you will put up, and share. Complete nga, uh, complete nga, I think you, you Counselor Raga was there during the meeting, di ba? Oh, so we, this is now the, and they have complied, they have complied.
Any commentary? Kagalanggalang suset, magtahas na ba?
Maraming salamat, Madam Chair. Tanong ko lang sana if merong favorable recommendation from the City Legals Office.
May paborable ba? Recomendasyon from City Legal? Kagalanggalang, Edgar Cabanlas?
I, I'm not sure, but I think there was a favorable recommendation from the CLNRO. What about the legal though, nah? Hala. CLNRO? Because we have previously approved for sure lease agreement without the CLNRO. Oh, without the legal, after all, this, this, actually, this is it's not, it is not within our authority to issue the, the, the list. We are only saying that we have no objection. It is the DNR that has the authority to approve or disapprove.
Ah, okay. So, ano nga, ano masasabi?
Just to be clarified
Kagalanggalang, bakit ka nagsalita hindi pa kita kinawag? Okay, nalang, sige, kagalanggalang, Roger Abaday.
Maraming salamat po, uh, Madam Presiding Officer. Just for clarity, will you please turn page forty-eight? Uh, appendix day forty-eight of your agenda. Paragraph F of the affidavit of undertaking. Very clear state here the condition that uh, with the said approval endorsement of the Reclamation Board Authority Gamma Project Corporation undertakes to comply to vacate the property voluntarily covered by the application for for sure lease agreement. If the project of Kageyan Eurocity for reclamation will be hampered by Gamma Foods Corporation. Notarized, notarized by the, uh, this undertaking.
Thank you. Claro, claro naman eh. Ano? Oh, kagalanggalang, Attorney James Judith.
Madam Chair, dili na ko kinala magtinagalaw, kaya nagtagalaw na ko ganyan. Inanila, ang ako point ng query lang, Majority Floor Leader, no, kanang um, ako magitanaw din ang mga attachments, suklib din ng mga attachments. O maski nga ni sa affidavit of undertaking, gusto lang ako tatawag kung ang pagtugot man ato sa interposing no objection, ako lang kung ang ilabang for sure lease application sa Gamma Foods, di pa kaingon nga ilan din ang kuralon, babagan nila ang lapihan, nga gikan bali sa wala nga, nga tampi sa maong balinga propidad sa Gamma Foods, dili na makatabok atong mga kaiksunan, paingon dito sa kining, sa pikas tampi sa tunga bahin sa maong propidad. Mala na akong gusto klaro.
Kagalanggalang, Edgar Cabanlas, yes?
Uh, for sure lease is not reclamation. Kini siya, kwanan ni siya mga kahue mga, di dili siya makadistorbo kay sa dagat. Murag, panagan, di dili ni kuralon. Uh, ang niya lang na is dunay maparkingan sa mga, sa mga barko, diya usap lansa ba? Pero dili gisa nga iyan, babagan ang dagat. Oh, makagaya pun, makagaya pun.
Claro man ang undertaking niyo, will be hampered Gamma Foods, so ang Kageyan will have the, all the authority kung inkasod there's a hampering of any, any program, project sa city.
We require that, Madam Chair, even the corporate authority from the corporation itself was attached to the record.
Okay, uh, kagalanggalang, Ayana Chas, yes, please?
Magandang hapon po, ating ginang, uh, busy alkal din ang ating, ang ating siyudad ng Kageyan di Oro. Uh, may tanong lamang po ako, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, since this is a for sure lease, so how many years nga pwede sila magamit sa atong shoreline? And kung mahawa sila or kung gamito na sa siyudad, ang maong area. Do you have to compensate the Gamma sa ilang development sa maong area? Kay there is always sa atong balaw, the payment of just compensation when we expropriate or magamita sa property. Since it is voluntary, wala man din ni implied and express nga Byron ba na to sila, kaya basig pagabot sa katapusan, maingon sila nga voluntary, may mahawa. Pero dako naman ang mga gasto. So part pa ba na siya sa maong contract, o pilas at katuig? That's on her, Chair.
Sinong sasagot? Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, yes?
No, that's right.
Okay, oh, number, letter G?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, for sure lease is on the sea. Nobody owns the sea, except the government. So wala, wag ka di ka bayaran, supposed to be. Kaya it is only a privilege to use temporarily the, the sea for, uh, for sure lease. And usay lang ako, ato na ng bantayan, just for the, just I'm thinking aloud. Usay lang na mga for sure lease guarantees dinis atong kabaybayunan nga. Murag, ilan na gireclaim, that's another topic later on.
Okay. Ah, isa pa, pagalanggalanggalang, Ayana Chas, yes, last?
Ang tuig, ilang katuig atong i-lease?
Ilang taon?
I think it's twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years.
Renewable by the, by the national government. Kita, dila kita, kedy man ato the sea is not out, it's the national government, that's why, it's the national government that grants the permit. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Sige.
Di kita, kita, tinatawag. Ay, yes, tawagin mo na kita, kagalanggalang, Attorney James Judith, sige.
Madam Chair, inanila, Majority Floor Leader, kapay si mong ingon kaganina nga, naiba nga, gitugutan ato for sure lease, mula giga, murag na nagharay, ilang babagan gapon ang kaliwala sa nilang undertaking, ilang babagan, ang maubaling nga lugar, kaya ilan malagim, murag gireclaim na nila ang maong lugar. Muna ang akong gikabalakan, pero wala po nagsupak, ako lang gitatao kung ilabagit ka ng imo, kaliwala ka na undertaking, kapalo na biagig ka na, ay mga isbirinoy sa tuka tiringban.
I get the point, but remember nga, ang gaminitor maguna na ang DNR, na ikaduha sab. Kana magu, kana mga ipangbabag nila diha. Kung ato kinantutukan, pagkaayop, pwede na to na ipaguba. But, remember nga, ang kanang ng tagaan na karos sa for sure lease, Madam Chair, wala 'yung mga undertaking as susama ni ini karoon, ng atong himo. But sa next time, maggranta, inanat lagay pun ng undertaking para nga kung sunod, gumuna to, what a gasto.
So, motion, approbado? Tututol? Walang tututol? Motion, ipinapasa? Wala na, walang tutol? Meron? Meron ka pa? Tututol ka? Ha? Pupidan in Tagalog. Sinong tututol? Sige na. Sinong tututol? Tututol?
Actually, Madam Chair, it is only a clarification I asked with Attorney James Judith.
So, walang tututol?
Ah, it's not objection. It is a query or information kung usay gamit ano, pantalan ba siya, or budiga siya, for the expansion sa atong kuwan, sa atong for sure?
Anong gamit daw?
Pantalan, actually pantalan.
Pantalan?
Pantalan. But really, pantalan ni permanenti.
Parang warf?
Kana ilang dungguanan siya?
O, kana dungguanan sa mga goods.
Goods.
Oo, kana ilang chicken siguro?
Chicken, dalos.
Mas dale, oo. Yes, Kagalanggalang Romeo Caliso, please?
Maraming salamat po ulit, Kagalanggalang na namumuno. There was an earlier manifestation that, there was a manifestation from Kagalanggalang suset magtahas daba, kung meron bang naidigay ang ating City Legal Office para sumuporta sa ating layunin ito? Kasi dapat komplituhin, kung talagang walang aberya, itong ating pagsangayon. Because until now, Madam Chair, I still feel that the legislative process is not complete.
Okay.
And I think we have to complete all the requirements. And in fact, I feel it awkward nga, naanatagi, meron na tayong inaprobahan noon na, starting this month, di na tayo papayag na magkaroon ng ganitong for sure lease. Yet, we are approving this one. That's why, ako sasangayon sana, pero hindi kompleto, tapos para bang, sa lungat ito, sa ating inaprobahan na ordinancean, nakaraangguan na, Madam Chair. Kaya ako talaga, unless this will be completed, siguro, akin pong iminumukahi ang aking pagtutol sa resolution na'to. Kasi, based on these two premises, Madam Chair, komplituhin muna natin para siguro, maniguro tayo na kompleteng proseso. At pangalawa, hindi ba, para bang sa lungat, sa inaproba na ating ordinancean, na nakaraangguan?
Okay. Maraming salamat, Kagalanggalang Romeo Caliso, yes, Kagalanggalang Majority Floor Leader. Edgar Cabanlas?
Move to differ.
Okay, there's this motion?
Let's refer to the City Legal Office.
To defer to the City Legal Office?
As long as it needs to be studied. There is no problem with that. What he only saying is that it's not the city government that approved this. But, okay, we will go back to the City Legal. Thank you very much.
Give the City Legal also the timetable?
Yes, let us not rush the issue.
One week? Ah, two weeks, two weeks, yeah.
In fact, I would rather, as Chairman of the Committee, as Chairman of the Board of Reclamation, I would rather disapprove this. If I will be the, but it's because of the...
Lack of ano?
Yes.
So, we will give them one week? Legal City, one week?
One week, oh. Let's request City Legal for one week.
Okay, so there's the deferment, so...
Move to differ, Madam Chair.
Okay, segundo. Tututol? Walang tututol? Itong motion? Pinapasa?
Okay, move to approve, second final reading? Ah, di na kinalan, okay. Sorry, nasubran ko din. Item number four, proposed resolution number 2023-0384, encouraging all business establishments in the city to undertake or engage in eligible corporate social responsibility GSR programs and projects like urban renewal, greening or regreening, social projects, housing for employees, educational projects, cultural revival, et cetera, and other projects or activities based on the developmental needs of the community pursuant to Title IX Corporate Social Responsibility of Ordinance Number 13418-2018, otherwise known as the Kageyan Doro City Investment Incentives Code of 2018. May I request that Councillor George Go-King be recognized?
Kagalanggalang George Go-King? Please, Tagalog lang, please?
Marami pong salamat, Kagalanggalang B.C. Alcalde Bebot Rodriguez, pinuno sa karamihang sahig. Attorney, Councillor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas. Oh, kamahal. Oh, sa mga kasamahan ko, sa ikab, beka bente. Dalawang po na Councill sa Kageyan Doro. Marami pong salamat, magandang hapon. Wala ho kung nakita na ibabara sa proposed resolution number 2023-0384, Kagalanggalang B.C. Alcalde Bebot Rodriguez.
Salamat, ibabara, ano yan, Tagalog? Ha? Tagalog, ibabara? Ah, okay.
Ah, tama ba?
Sama.
Kaysa Visay, ibubukog mo na siya.
Ibibukok?
Yun lang.
Motion, segundo? Tututol? Walang tututol? Motion, ipinasa?
Salamat po.
Move to approve, second and final reading?
Secondo, tututol? Walang tututol, motion ipinasa?
Item number five, proposed ordinance number 2023-0200, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of 8,500 for the item special program project, mines, management, other maintenance and operating expenses in the 2023 annual budget with the City Local Environment Natural Resources Office, the city to cover payment of the honorarium of the members of the City Mining Regulatory Board Technical Working Group for the month of November 2022. May I move that, may I request, Madam Chair, that Councillor Romeo V. Caliso be recognized?
Kagalanggalang Romeo Caliso?
Kagalanggalang na namumuno, nasa tama pong lahat. Kaya aking isinusulong ang pagsangayon sa ginansang ito.
Sulung, sundalong? Motion? Motion? Secondo, motion? Tututol? Walang tututol? Motion ipinasa ngayon din?
Move to approve, second and final reading?
Secondo, motion? Tututol? Walang tututol? Motion pinasa?
Item number six, proposed ordinance number 2023-0201, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of 25,000 from the item special program project, Salamat Paalam Retirement Gift Incentive Place Program in the 2023 annual budget of the Human Resource Management Office, the city to cover payment of the claim for retirement gift incentive of the lead engineer Julito, or Julito V. Serinya, former assistant city engineer, city engineering office, the city who died last January 18, 2018, with 25 years of government service. May I request that Councillor Alam Lim be recognized? I think she's from the Finance Committee?
Pagal? Kagalanggalang Alam Lim, you're recognized?
Kagalanggalang Vice Mayor, lahat ito ay tama. Isinusulong kong aprobahin, ordinance number 2023-2000.
Motion, segundo? Tututol? Walang tututol? Motion inaprobahan, pinasa ngayon din?
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Secondo, tututol? Walang tututol? Motion inaprobahan?
Item seven, proposed ordinance number 2023-0202, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi, representing the city government of Kageyan Doro to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the Philippine Commission and Women, represented by its Executive Director, Attorney Christine Rosary, Euseon Chavez, covering the conduct of gender and development-related activities in the city under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I request that Councillor Aimin Rose Moreno be recognized?
Kagalanggalang Aimin Rose Moreno, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Magandang hapon. And pati na rin sa mga kasamahan ko sa ikadalawampung sanggunyang panglusod, at pati na rin ang mga bisita natin, magandang hapon. In connection to this, no?
Magaling pa naman, Tagalog?
Gusto ko rin ipahiwag, ipahiwatig na ang kining MOU, no? Dito sa Mindanao, dalawa lang ang local learning hub in relation to God-related activities, and that is misamis Occidental and Davau. And dahil sa MOU na'to, tayo ay nagohok, nagaspire na maging God-centered din ang Kageyan Doro, not only in Mindanao, but also in the entire Philippines. Maging modelo ang Kageyan Doro, so that is the hope and aspiration. So, having been said that, I move to approve ordinance number 2023-202.
Okay, sino magsisikondo sa motion? Pagtututol? Walang tututol? Ang motion ay papasana?
Move to approve, second and final reading?
Secondo, tututol? Walang tututol? Motion ipasasa?
Item number eight, proposed ordinance number 2023-2003, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi, representing the city government of Kageyan Doro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Public Works and Highways Unified Project Management Office Flood Control III, covering the operation and maintenance of the contract package to flood risk management for the Kageyan Doro River Frame CDOR-associated structures and facilities under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. I will move for this, Madam Chair, move for the approval of this ordinance.
Second objection, Ihehanan motion is by Karit.
Move to approve, second and final reading?
Second objection, Ihehanan motion is by Karit.
Item number nine, proposed resolution number three, move, ah, for inclusion? May I move, Madam Chair, that items nine to thirteen be included in our agenda?
Second objection, Ihehanan motion is by Karit.
Item number nine, proposed resolution number 2023-0385, earnestly requesting...
Kagalanggalang Edgar Cabanlas, hindi na ikaw magreread si Mr. Secretary para makapagpahinga ka?
Oh. Sige, sige, Turks, ikaw.
Nakalimutan mo na ang lahat.
Item number nine?
Ayun ang, Ana, Ana, Turks, ako na si...
Item number nine is proposed resolution number 2023-0385, earnestly requesting Congress of the Philippines to review and consider amendments to Republic Act Number 8291, or the GSIS law, and related laws on retirement packages in the public sector by allowing the voluntary contribution of elected officials who have completed one, two, or three terms in office to complete the minimum 15 years of premium contribution to the GSIS, and by lowering the optional retirement aids for government workers. Proponents, Councillor George is Go-King, PCL CDO Chapter President, and all members.
Councillor George Go-King?
George Go-King, Madam Chair.
You're recognized?
Marami pong salamat, Honorable Ikagalanggalang na B.C. Alcalde, sa mga kasamahan ko sa ikabente, twenty ba'to? Dalawampu Councill? Wala ko nakita ang problema dito, kasi instead of one term, isang term, dalawang term, at saka tatlo, instead of 15 years, pwidi na. You're qualified, qualified na po kayo, like sa B.C. Alcalde, isang term ka lang, pwidi na the 15 years pension from GSIS, na hindi na kailangan mag-15 years po tayo.
Ah, okay.
Ito, first, second term pa, pero dahil sa COVID, hindi po na implement ito, so we are recommending to the Congress. So, wala ko nakita ang problema po dito. I move to propose resolution number 2023-0385, B.C. Alcalde Bebot Rodriguez.
Motion? Tututol? Ah, tututol? Inquiry, Kagalanggalang Romeo Caliso?
Marami salamat pong muli, Kagalanggalang na namumuno. I'd just like to inquire, well, pardon me for my ignorance, but I'm sure ang Kagalanggalang na George Go-King is sanay dito. What will happen now? Say, I'm a retiring legislator, Madam Chair, and we will not be able to meet that 15 years minimum number of tenure for the maturity of our GSIS contributions. So, what will happen now to my GSIS contributions if I will not satisfy that 15 years tenure expense?
That's why, pro tempore, General Caliso, that's why the Philippine Counselors League is requesting that Congress to amend that you do not have to take the 15 years. So, nine years ka lang, you will not pay anymore, but you will be entitled to whatever benefits nga, isaka 15 years. A councillor is always a councillor, one term, two terms, three terms. So, you do not need to continue paying. You will be entitled to the 15 years amenities of GSIS.
Yes, yes, Councillor Romeo Caliso?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, right now, without any act of Congress, wala good?
Wala.
Wala di ay?
But, but then, excuse me, Councillor Romeo Caliso, cash value daw, that you contributed, you will be able to get it? It's a number of years you're in service.
Because I understand if you reach that 15 years tenure, it will be doubled. Is that the contributions or... Because it will be unfair if the policy of GSIS is 15 years the minimum number of contributions. Yet, they know that the tenure of office of, that's like an elected official, the maximum is only nine years. So, I think, yeah, that's why I really strongly, I strongly approve, go for the approval of the said resolution, Madam Chair. But yet, they... But yet there should be other actions that should be suggested to GSIS to be fair with, uh, those government employees whom they're collecting, uh, the deductions, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So I'd like to add a little...
Yes, Councillor George.
Honorable Vice Mayor Bebo Rodriguez. Yesterday, we had a meeting in the Regional Office, Arving Regional Office, I mean, uh, Counselors League Regional Officers. We also endorse, uh, this resolution addressed to Congress, including the proposed amendment na every councillor will only have three years. We are proposing five, two-five years, uh, submitted to Congressman Rofu Rodriguez, part of the constitutional amendment because it's not fair, we have only three years. We just started, it's almost finished, election na naman. So it's not fair now, we are being charged for non-inactive kay alanganin ng three years eh. So yesterday, we have submitted approved by the Regional Philippine Counselors League, five years, five years. Maximum two terms of five years, uh, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Any sec... Yes, Councillor Ayen Mark Nakaya?
It is found in the third page, Madam Presiding Officer, which, uh, consists the resolution of the National Liga. And there are, uh, one, two, three, four, five, five proposals that, uh, the National Liga has submitted to the Philippine Congress, which now pending to the City Council for support. And I agree with the entire proposals. It has been, uh, really the plight of the Philippine Counselors League, whose term will only end if successful, three terms. And for those who would like to have a comeback so that the fifteen years will be, uh, rendered to fit the GSIS rules and regulations for a mandatory retirement could not for many, for non-relection and whatsoever reasons, Madam Presiding Officer. On the letter B, this has been the, the rule on the all, uh, employees in the GSIS the last three years. Average monthly compensation, which is the basis of computing the retirement package of, uh, the retiree. I find it not so fitting, in fact, even for other employees. For example, uh, Madam Presiding Officer, if a member of the City Council who is earning so much amount of rate would not be able to come back, and he has only six, nine years, and, uh, working in the executive would only constitute little, uh, rate. So in other words, he will not enjoy the, the rate of a City Councillor because that would be the last three years. And on letter E, Madam Presiding Officer, allow voluntary contribution for elected officials who have completed one, two, or three terms in office to complete the minimum fifteen years of minimum contribution to the GSIS. In other words, there is an exactness of the proposal that after you reach fifteen years of contribution, you stop. Because there, there, there is nothing that would tell us that, uh, for example, up to the retirement age of sixty, the compulsory, or sixty-five, the mandatory. However, language we can provide, if we may, if the good proponent would agree, the Regional Chair of PCL, uh, we should, on item B and E, Madam Presiding Officer, amplify the position of the City Council of Cagayan Duro. Not only that we stand with the National Liga, but we propose further for the benefit and welfare of the entire PCL. In other words, for the letter B, the highest, the old language that was already introduced by law on GSIS that the highest compensation received by an employee should be the, the, uh, the basis of the counting. Kaya akong problema, nabiyatay mga kauban konsial sa una, nanganan na din na. Then pag gumanda yon sa executive, pero nagswindu lang siguro, probably forty, fifty thousand. So ang naitabo nila, ang last three years nila, Madam Presiding Officer, kundi sila makapursu balik City Council, katung forty or fifty thousand. Munang pasabot sa letter B. Ang sa letter E, ang pasabot lugar, kumuabot na ka fifteen years, assuming plus three years from now or plus three years from 2025, then you're not already qualified to pay more for your GSIS contribution because the exactness of the word is up to reaching fifteen years. So my proposal for modification and language is up to the retirement age, whether you opt to the optional or you go to the mandatory.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Ayen Mark Nakaya. Yes, Councillor George Isgokking?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Honorable Councillor Ayen Mark Kiblat Nakaya. I would like to propose that we submit another resolution addressed to the National Board because this is a standard, uh, to incorporate our, uh, for originality. Uh, we cannot amend what was agreed upon by the National Board of the Philippine Counselors League, but I would like to request the proponent for that to file a separate resolution address to the Philippine Counselors League National Board.
Okay, so this is motion. Second objection. I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Move to approve on second and final reading, Madam Chair.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Item ten, Turks. Item ten is proposed resolution, proposed ordinance number 2023-204, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui, representing the city government of Cagayan Duro, to enter into and sign the Technology Transfer Agreement with the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, represented by its President, Dr. Ambrosio B. Cultura Disecan, relative to the transfer of the web-based software application called Imonitor MoAP to the city for monitoring and mapping of the out-of-school youth under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, certified urgent by City Mayor Rolando Eui.
May I move, may I request, Madam Chair, that Councillor Suset MacTazdaba be recognized?
Councillor Suset Daba, you're recognized.
Maraming salamat, Madam Chair. I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2023-204.
Any second objection. I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Move to approve on second and final reading, Madam Chair.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Number eleven, Turks.
Number eleven is proposed ordinance number 2023-205, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui, representing the city government of Cagayan Duro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the provincial government of Misamis Oriental, represented by Honorable Governor Peter M. Onavia, covering the detail of Mr. Chrisustom E. Kailling, supervising administrative officer of the City General Services Office, the city, to the provincial government of Misamis Oriental, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, certified urgent by Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui.
May I request, Madam Chair, that Councillor Joey Abu be recognized?
Councillor Attorney Joey Abu, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But before that, um, uh, Majority Floor Leader, can I just profound a few questions on the matter? If I be allowed?
Proceed. Move sa, move, move. Move muna.
Move po, yeah. Ako'y magmove niya, ako'y pumukta na.
So, ginza, man, ano't siya man? Apo din eh, bigsa ginza?
Yes, I'm just, we're just distributing the...
Ah, okay, okay. Sige lang, we will not question, we will not question. Move, move.
Move. I move for approval of the said, uh, proposed resolution, Madam Chair.
Any second objection?
Yes.
Comment? You better answer, comment.
I have a comment.
Are you?
Yes.
Okay, sige.
That's why I am... Meron ko ganuwan duwak eh, ako'y ipamove niya, ako'y pumukta na. But anyway, uh, I went through the, um, draft memorandum of agreement, um, attached in the said, uh, inclusion. And, uh, I've read, um, under item number two, that it states here that the detail, which, which is with the consent of Mr. Kailling, is for a period of three years from May 3, 2023 to May 2, 2026. The detail is subject to renewal at the discretion of the city. And if you try to read at the bottom part of the memorandum of agreement, it states here that this MOA may not hereafter be modified, altered, or amended except by means of written instrument mutually agreed upon by the party, by both parties. Now, my question, Madam Presiding Officer, is that as you're just assuming that, uh, both parties, the governor and the city mayor, would not be the ones sitting elected by year 2025? Would this still contract be applicable? Is there any mode of mutually rescinding this or amending this? Kaya, katalanin mo, three years up to 2026, it is still subject to, kung mag-election pamatay na, we do not know what will happen later on. So, uh, kung atong niyang ibutang dito, tao bigog ka tong bago sitting governor or sitting mayor, di sila ganahan na ano'ng tao. And the parties in this contract are the sitting governor and the sitting mayor. So how do we, how do we amend or rescind or modify the terms of this? Probably, my suggestion is that if there is this detail to the, from the city government to the provincial government, basin pwede, two years lang.
Yeah.
Up till June 30, 2025, instead of 2026.
Okay, thank you very much. Let us listen to Councillor Ayen Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Uh, just an observation. Actually, uh, this is not a simple detail or the, or an agreement that two local government units should undertake, maybe perhaps the draftsman, the legal draftsman. In the legal department have failed to check the civil service rules. And, uh, because if you review the law on, on matters of, uh, assigning, reassigning government employees to another government institution, the term or tenure used is secondment. This would not, uh... Actually, this is an irregular act, Madam Presiding Officer, unless you use secondment. In other words, you are seconding the employee of a city government of Cagayan Duro to the provincial government. The language perhaps even pertaining to the, the question of Councillor Abu is correct. And, uh, murad, dili, dili mo pasa review.
So, diligin na makapasa?
Dili mo pasa sa civil service.
Uh, what if another, so is that, can we still use that? Even if another, of course, we will not, they will not be able to use that anymore because the, is the, the, the MOU is between the governor and the mayor. So what is the...
May I continue, Madam Presiding?
Yes, yes, please.
The remedy is, of course, the City Council. We know that it's not secondment written in the instrument. In other words, secondment, second then meant. Uh, we use secondment to second the employee to another. Uh, we have done that in the past. From USTP here, then city government to another national government employee, even in GO, uh, government agencies, regional level, they do secondments. Munang kaila sa civil service. So, uh, we can modify, we can modify, and we can change the language for as long as the spirit and the intent of the MOA is, uh, is still present, Madam Presiding Officer. In fact, we have the record. Uh, Secretary Turks DeSanbigal can provide us. Uh, in other words, jointly perhaps, we, we move to modify and to substitute the proposed ordinance. Itodlo, Turks, di kaiko kita. Yeah, oh. Representing the city government of Cagayan Duro, receiving agency to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement on secondment with the Northern Mindanao Medical Center. And we have plenty, we have plenty, Madam Presiding Officer. So my motion would be to substitute and to be congruent with the regulations of the civil service.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ayen Mark Nakaya. Any comment? Yes, Councillor Attorney James... Attorney Joey Abu.
With that manifestation from the good councillor, Councillor Nakaya, and that of my query as well as to the term of detail with the city government, um, let's just refer this back to the city legal office for the drafting of the, uh, the amended MOA that would, um, muma-hom siya sa mga gani angani. Just for one week, let's give it one week for the amendment.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu. Yes, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Edgar Cabanlas?
Uh, yes, let's defer this because, uh, the, the tenure of the request of the mayor is different from the tenure proposed by Councillor Nakaya. Uh, move to defer, Madam Chair?
Refer for one week, huh?
Refer to, I think there is no urgency also here, but, uh, we can wait.
Asama na urgency. Okay, so there's this motion to defer?
And, uh, uh, refer to the city legal office for immediate reaction or immediate legal opinion on this issue.
Okay, any second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Uh, proposed resolution, number twelve, proposed resolution number 2023-386, approving and/or adapting supplemental annual investment program number two for CY 2023 of the city government of Cagayan Duro. May I request Councillor, uh, Alam Lim to be recognized?
Councillor Alam Lim, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, everything's in order. I move to approve, uh, proposed resolution number 2023-386.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Uh, proposed resolution number thirteen, proposed, uh, resolution number 2023-387, earnestly requesting the Department of Public Works and Highways, Region 10, to consider the installation of CATS-E or reflective road studs in all national roads or highways in Cagayan Duro City to make the road boundaries and lanes visible to motorists particularly at night. Subject to styling, I move for its approval, Madam Chair.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Karit.
There are, there being no other matters to resolve?
Sandali muna.
Oh.
Tayo'y kakanta before tayo magtapos sa negosyo ng araw na ito, business of the day, negosyo. Business of the day, negosyo, araw na ito. Tayo muna ay kakanta ng birthday song to our birthday celebrant. Ang kakanta ngayon na maglead ng kanta si Counselor Agasuan. Please, tayo ay tapayo.
Lisa, prefer, Danny, anyway, Madam Chair.
Sinuman gusto mo ang kakanta?
Joey Abu, Joey Abu, Joey Abu.
Ah, silang dalawa, alikadito, Attorney Joey Abu, kayon dalawa.
Wow. Nagtapos kissa. Sige, the singing, Madam Chair, would be led by Attorney Joey Abu.
Sabay-sabay po tayong umawit ng maligayang karawan.
Tagalog?
Ang consial, J. Rova Pasqual.
Tagalog version? Tagalog version, happy?
Is this nice? One, two, three, go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
One more time.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Kiss, kiss. 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 Wish, wish. Wish, wish. Kiss, kiss. Katungga, galit siro, may mukis ba? Katungga, lead, gantamay mukis siro.
Happy birthday to you.
Move to adjourn, Madam Presiding Officer.
There are no other matters to take up, Madam Chair. Move to adjourn.
Session adjourn.